My name is Rob Oog and I'm a major county resident. And I want to talk briefly about the December 6 meeting that occurred in 2013. It was an airport committee meeting. I wrote a complaint to the Attorney General's office on December 10, 2013. They responded in April 21st, 2015. The Attorney General, after lengthy review of my complaint, concluded that that meeting Violated the Open Meetings Act. And I have asked the county clerk if any of the board members that attended that meeting had returned the funds for attending that meeting. And what I'm saying here is, I have asked that if this was an illegal meeting, then why, as a taxpayer, should I be required to reimburse county board members for the illegal tax? So what I have done is I've asked Augie to suggest to the county board members, I won't use names, that they return the $25 fee and the travel fee. And I understand that one board member has. And this morning, I'd just like to ask that you folks, if you entered into that meeting and it occurred and it was inadvertent error, that you refunded the county the $35 or whatever it is. The other thing that I could talk about at great length, but I won't, is the Jerry Griffin I asked Mr. Griffin to respond to a FOIA request regarding who was the FOIA officer for the officers in the county. And I've learned that Jerry Griffin is not a FOIA officer. He's been there for seven or eight months now. And it's not a difficult test. Takes about an hour. And I don't understand why Jerry's still there. I'd like to see the board dismiss him for cause, for reason, many reasons. But that hasn't occurred. So you've been adding to your list of reasons why he should be dismissed, that he has not got the FOIA training he's had. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Our sense of peace. Only I would like to second his call for reimbursement on that meeting in 2013.
Thank you. May reports? Alan, do you have any report?
Nothing at this time.
Mike?
Yes.
Andy?
I got two things. They finished putting the heat pump in the judge's chambers. I take it it works for them?
I don't know.
Okay.
That was on my desk when I come in this morning.
Yeah, okay. They put it in, so they had the crane. Tom Judy came up and sat it out there and they got that. As far as I know, it's hooked up. He submitted you a bill, they haven't done, it's working at the moment, so.
Well, we won't pay it until we make sure it's working, if that's all right with you.
That's fine, good.
Okay.
So anyway, that's got to take care of. I got, I did locate Crane. I emailed you and Alan, see what, you know, what the.
Was substantial savings.
Yeah. Midland Engineering originally had a place out of Champagne, is going to bring down a crane. I got ahold of Randy Peterson and asked him if I could find one cheaper. And if that was necessary to have one that big, that long, it's 120-foot boom, and he said yes, because of the circumference of it is. So he said, he gave me a McAllister out of Terre Haute, and I called them. Rather than $10,200, it's $800 a day for two days. There's a 135 delivery, 135 pickup, and tax, it comes from just a hair over $2,000, plus the $1,500, $1,600 estimate. So that's what we're looking at. They're supposed to come in, deliver either this evening or first thing in the morning, and they're going to come down to figure out what exactly what the roof on the courthouse needs.
Should you get an operator for that?
I think they operate it themselves.
It's, it's a. It's just an extended version of their 60 footer, is what I think, is just the one I'm thinking about. We've used it before, I mean, it worked.
You've used the big one before?
I have, one of the guys that I work with has.
Okay.
And we've had it out there on Paul's property, because we can't get on the sidewalks, it's too heavy. So we got set way out there in the yard to get halfway across that house. 120 feet just does make it, when you're working on that chimney, I've very thoughtful hands.
So that's what, that's supposed to come in tomorrow? They're supposed to do the work tomorrow and Wednesday? We were in, originally had a schedule for today and tomorrow, but I kept watching the rain.
Oh, yeah, you'd have a mess in that yard if you tried to get that.
Are they gonna, I don't know, are they gonna get in the yard?
Well, I don't, what else are they gonna get in?
Sit on that concrete and go around that way? And I, well, I don't know, we'll just, I'll see what they're gonna.
They could come in the north entrance, but they better not be getting on any concrete down there around on the outside.
Right.
That's your handicap entrance, keep that in mind.
Okay.
How big a unit is this? The one they had before, they had to take the concrete wall out and gravel and go.
I think what they're intending to do, maybe I'm wrong here, Andy, but getting, coming in the handicap and driving out in the yard and finding a place out there between the two sidewalks, they'll break those sidewalks.
No, I don't think they plan on being on sidewalk. I wouldn't have one sidewalk.
I mean, I wouldn't take it on the sidewalk, maybe those are better.
Has Randy looked at? They had a.
He knows, he does that all the time.
Yes, but I'm saying, and he's done it there, because they have their unit there. But I'm thinking, if it's as big as the unit they had, cares?
Oh, no, no, no.
No, that's not that.
This is, this is a glorified, yeah, it's not very big. Like, two guys can get in it at the most. And I, I wouldn't have more than one guy in it with 120 feet.
Right.
Because it's really.
I'm with you now.
Yeah, I mean, I, you could, I'm sure you've used one like it, just a smaller bird.
Right. So they're supposed to show up tomorrow, tomorrow and Wednesday to do the estimate. I talked to Mark Sullivan as far as putting those headers in, our suggestion that we replace, he's, I called in and said, hey, when, originally it was going to be two or three weeks. So he stopped by and said he'd be there probably next week, so it's probably going to be two or three weeks realistically. Those guys always get on a job that's two weeks later when they finally get done and show up to your place. So he supposedly, I would say by the end of the month, he should be able to get in there and put those header repairs.
Have you looked at it?
He looked, he and I went and looked at it a couple of months ago. He feels real confident in what he can do. So, that's all I have.
Did we figure out, like, on the painting, the other, you know, part we talked about when you were there watching Tom Judy go through the yard?
Yeah.
Is that?
I got, I have, in that Circuit Works Office, where we had.
Just done it.
Did they get it painted? All right. I didn't know, I gave them the okay to go ahead and do that.
Right.
But I didn't know when she, and I talked to, in fact, I ran into Nita Copstock outside, and she said, yeah, it wouldn't take her but a day. She gave me, I think, $350 to do it or something. And I said, you know, go ahead and do it. She was able to strip that primer off the front, was my understanding. So have you seen a sense? Okay, looks pretty good.
They didn't have the trim boards up yet.
When Mark comes in to do the header, he said he'd come down there and put some new plate, what do you call that?
Kickboard or?
Kickboard, yeah, around the bottom. They lose some new on there, so that'll make her happy and we're back.
Take them down. I was really amazed if they got that painted off of that.
I was too. I mean, he could scratch it off with your finger.
Whenever I went in there and talked to him, you know, I talked, not Sandy.
Uh, Tammy.
Yeah, all I could think of was kids. She said, you know, Nita said she thought she could do that, so.
Some kind of gel or something to put on it?
So I'm just curious.
How it worked, but I definitely said pretty good.
They were happy.
And so Mark will come in and put that, when he does the rest, he'll come in and put some new coat around the bottom, and that'll all be done. So, thanks, I forgot about that. Jeff?
Okay. Financially first, IMRF, the new rates at which we're going to be charged for our folks, the main one, or the general one, is going to go down, I would say moderately. The one for the road deputies is going to go up slightly. However, the big change is, I don't know whether you all recall that besides a lump sum payment that we make on an annual basis, the IMRF system started charging each county or each municipality X amount as far as catch-up per month. The first year was like $80-some thousand, last year was 72, then 60-some, 62, I think. In any rate, this year, this coming fiscal year, it will be roughly $5,500, or basically savings of about $84,000 a month, or a year, that we'd then be able to both pay to get ourselves even more caught up. So I thought that was important to make sure that you knew.
How much a month, Jeff?
About $7,000 a month, change, to the good. In other words, 62 to 55. And that's rounded off.
Where we asked for being caught up?
Well, I don't have that in front of me, and I don't imagine, I didn't ask Augie. I mean, we're, we're in much better shape than we were.
We're knocking it down.
Four years ago. And we've made, the board has made some good decisions, Augie's made some good decisions about that, and so has Don, and collectively, we're in much better shape. And that's why I think we're seeing a deceleration in that payment system. Okay? As far as the budget, at this point, we've got 41.66% of the year in. Adding the last payroll, we're at 39.8% expenditures. So we're under on expenditures about 3%, 2.5%. We're doing better on income, as you'll notice, we're almost 30%. And you've noticed that a lot of the state items on the first page are right where they should be, except for taxes, obviously. Which brings up the next item. Well, first of all, do you have any questions on that, on the items that we're getting reimbursed from the state? We also are expecting some big reimbursements from a, from a couple of different sources from the state, and to let us know that hopefully that'll hit here in the next day or two.
We're not in anticipation yet, are we?
No. And it looks, the only reason that we might have to go with the anticipation warrants might be because of TORT or IMRF. At this point, our cash flow is in pretty good shape. I didn't get a chance to talk to Don, but I did last Thursday or Friday, and he was feeling, you know, Don's never terribly comfortable, but he, he thought that we were in halfway decent shape. The multiplier has been set, finalized, which is a good thing, because that way we can process everything. I don't know, how are you proceeding, Aug? Are you?
We are, we are just within a stone's throw of finishing up.
So we're in good shape?
We're in pretty good shape.
And I don't know whether we'll be ahead of the game over last year, but we certainly are not going to be behind the game. Okay? So I think that's the best way to put it. The audit will be presented this, this Wednesday. There are several things that the auditors, and you'll get a letter, a finding letter, which I think we'll talk about later on, is credit card controls, second eye on bills, making sure all departments have a second eye on bills, and then pre-approval of certain items, especially credit cards, after the fact. We need to be pre-approved instead of going after approval after the fact. These are just some of the things. Some of the stuff you'll notice has dropped off, cash control, some of the other things have dropped off, so we have made improvements. I think the auditors were big enough that they're always going to find a few things. And we have some, we'll talk with the finance committee about some of the things we need to do to correct some of these items. There are no prob, I want to reiterate on these items that I just mentioned, there are no problems. This is simply to deal with them before they happen. It's preventative. So anything that we're approaching will be to help the situation and, long-term, have less problems, so. But I'm sure he can answer any questions you've got at that point. Dina brought to the forefront on travel, she had some questions about reimbursement on travel for the folks that are going out on the assessment trips. And talking to Don, there is no line item, we're going to create a temporary line item that's reimbursed by the townships, or the ones that we're doing the assessments for. And then I've asked her to make sure that she corrects how she feels comfortable, so that we can look at it as a board and include it in the new budget and make sure it's correct. Okay? So again, another issue, Dina's new, and she has different ways of doing things, she sees problems, she's fresh eyes, and we just need to respond to it and get things taken care of for her. Airport, we got late week, bid the end, one bid on the post that was basically $225 per post. So the airport is going to be looking at that. I'm hoping they're going to get another bid in, and then we need to decide how many posts we're going to deal with, but that will be reported back to the board. Okay? Energy grant, we have Kelly Lockhart, who's worked on other grants, who now has the information for the main hangar doors, based upon our energy audit. And the highway department was able to come up with the engineering for that, because they had done their doors. So what they did was, in effect, plug our door sizes in the three doors. So we're ahead of the game on the engineering and so forth. Kelly, going to meet with Kelly here in the next week or so. Obviously, this is not the best time, just before the beginning of the fiscal year with all the things that Browners doing, but he's willing to take a look at these for us, not just an energy grant, but wherever other grants might be. And if you're asking, how are we going to pay him? He will be paid out of the administrative fees that the grants include. Okay? Correctly billed and sustained that way. Okay? So this has already been, going to Kelly, he's looking.
That's the whole, that's.
That's the energy grant, engineering and everything on the, on the deal. Okay?
Okay.
So we're ahead of the.
What do you expect, to, to, 100%?
Oh, no, yeah, it won't be 100%. I, I mean, I would hope that it could be, but I don't expect to. I imagine we're looking again at a fed, state, local.
Because I, because I think this figure floating around was $30,000 to redo those doors.
Yeah, something like.
Something like that, okay.
But we have to deal with it sooner or later.
Oh, yeah.
And we've got to find out where we're at. We've got to find out what's possible and what's not. And if we don't start on it, we're never going out. So, and Chris was good enough to kind of jingle our memory on the deal here a couple of months ago, and I wanted to make sure that the board knew that we got it on.
You're bringing that tonight, I take it?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Do you want a copy of it, so you can read it?
No, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to.
I'll have a copy.
I'll take your word for it.
All right, so we do need an executive session to cover personnel and.
Well, before we do that, I want to ask the sheriff, if you had any?
That's, we, there's a couple of things I wanted to say, but we did do, in order for me to finish. There are some concerned areas in the budget. We, as a sheriff's committee, need to meet with the sheriff to help, to help, not hinder, I mean, we need to understand what's going on, and we need, you, Carl, and I need to get together with the sheriff. He's asked for our opinions, and we need to deal with some issues as far as the budget and negotiations. Right, Sheriff?
Right.
I think that's the best way to characterize it. So, you know, everybody's got concerns. We're forced into certain things that we don't necessarily like right now, and we need to get resolved. So that's how we're doing there. Also, I want to let you know, we did have a FOIA request by Rob last week, and it kind of languished, and hopefully, I think I've got it all taken care of, and it'll be taken care of this morning, yeah.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
All right? I just want to let you know.
Appreciate you.
And we'll deal with things the best we can. Okay?
Thank you.
I was not aware of it till this morning, so, that's all I've got, sir.
Jeff, Dina, do you know, I was reading some more stuff the other day about the side network, still not dead, where they're talking about taking money away from counties, municipalities.
Yes.
And still up to, I don't know if you guys had a chance to talk with anybody about that?
I didn't know whether Ben was going to talk about that, or whatever.
I didn't know, or.
Go ahead.
Okay. We met with Chapin Rose, Senator Rose. And he, he is on the budget committee for the governor. And he indicated that from now till the end of the year, we shouldn't see any loss on our funds.
And it looked like they were coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Now, he doesn't, he can't tell us for sure where it's going to wind up in the new year. Okay? Starting July 1. He would guess, and we'll have plenty of time, they should know by, before we start really getting into the budget, but it's, for his best guess, is that the income tax might be hit 10 to 15%. Everything else should remain about the same. Okay?
Yeah.
That's a lot better than 50%.
Well, that's what they floated out originally, let's throw, let's throw, we're going to cut you in half, and then if we don't cut you in half, then everybody will be happy.
Oh, that's great.
You know, and I, and that's the reason I'm saying that, because I've read a lot about, especially, actually, not totally about us, but the collar, collar counties and those collar suburb cities, you know, that's where, I was reading more about, they're still talking, their representatives are saying, you know, and both, both sides, saying they have no idea what's going to happen with that yet. And, but their premise was also, well, just be thankful, it's not going to be 50%, which throws me into the idea, like, that is not their money, in my mind. That, that was not set up for the state to sweep, to take, at all. And I don't know if there's anything we can.
We're trying.
Do about it, or if our counties, or if our other municipalities, if that's a, if that's a loss sake.
Income tax.
Income tax, I'm sorry, did I say?
No, you didn't.
No, you didn't, he was just asking for clarification.
You know, because that was.
Yeah, 10% to us would be a little over 70 grand. I mean, that's not a small, a small amount.
Stuff that we.
The other thing we talked about is mandates. You know, they continue, he's railing on mandates. For example, Augie and the other counties clerks are the same day voting. I mean, it, I mean, it's, it's a onus, or onerous on you, and it's just devastating to some of the bigger counties, for, so, that's an issue that's on the table. There's a lot of balls in the air as far as negotiations, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was a latest ingredient.
10 to 15%.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I bet you.
Sheriff?
I'm good.
Augie?
You have your board packets? I don't know if you, if you've all had a chance to get out your agendas and see if there's any questions on there for me?
No.
I gotta get some water. As Jeff mentioned, we're very close to finishing up the, our part of the tax cycle. So we'll spare the details, but we're, we're very close. We are, I think we're a few weeks ahead of schedule, so. Oh, the other thing, I was asked about poker runs in our county. And looking back through the files, I'm, I have not ever, I'm not able to locate any information that we've ever done those officially. Now, there may have been some, but, so, a resident of the county brought me in the statutes that govern that, and that's going upstairs to Mark to let him look at, so that we can see how we are to correctly put that into place. It kind of falls along the lines of raffles.
Right.
And those types of things. So it's not a big deal, but we want to make sure we do it right.
Wasn't there legislation within the last two years specifically dealing with that curve? I don't know if that's what they showed you or not, but I.
Yeah, that's.
There was something.
That's what I was given, but I have not had the time to read it, but.
And you've already shipped it up to Mark?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to. So, might be.
We have a resolution on raffles, I think, in the county.
But I was thinking there was something that, again, one of the things that the General Assembly decided to do, maybe not, could be my brain's going there, but that, I thought within the last few years, they almost specifically either put something, that type of language?
I think they, they.
Or did, pulled out something.
Made an addition, or carved out, or isolated, or made a separate thing, just for poker runs.
Was there, is there, like, are we, like, missing a ton of revenue off poker runs?
Not anymore, no.
No.
If I could talk, I think the issue is, a poker run typically crosses through multiple municipalities and counties.
Yeah.
And they would, before the, that law, they would have to go to each municipality of each county and get their, pay their whatever fee, and get the certificate to do what they're doing. So it basically made it worth, wasn't it worth it? Because poker runs don't make that much money.
Why do we care? That's what my question is.
I don't think we have in the past.
Okay.
I just think there was something that was specific to poker runs within the last.
But now I think we have to care.
Yeah, that's why, because they cross some of the jurisdictions, and you have to get a good license in each one.
So, and it'll be nominal. I, I think, I think the fee will be nom, nominal. Like raffles, how they, 10 bucks for a raffle permit, I mean, it's, it's not much, but.
None of them ever paid?
Come on, now, none of them's all of them.
No, actually, there's two that do.
Yeah. So, that's, that's what I'm working on. That's it for me.
Anything else to come before the meeting? If not, Jeff will make that resolution.
I move, we go into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body and pending litigation. My second.
We have a motion in second to go into executive session. All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
You're talking about the back on for.
And Ben's going to announce that we're.
You're wearing your hands.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're back in regular session of study session of the county board.
Sorry I'm late. My name is Vern C. I work as a, in the construction industry as a head of equipment operator. And I got called to go to work tomorrow, so, just a while ago. So that's the reason I'm late, I'm not very well-prepared. But anyway, my question is, and I farm a little bit, they're going to build a new bridge, apparently, I don't know whether it's funded or not, at stake and everything, on, I'm not sure what road they, they call this, it's probably 1200 East, maybe it's the road. And.
It's a bridge?
It's by L H.
Yeah.
All right. So you can see that that road is crooked, and the proposal is to straighten it. And there are six landowners involved in four sections of land here, right? So that's just how it falls, so. Anyway, my question is, do we spend a million dollars on a bridge like this, which I don't really think there's anything wrong with it? I work in the construction industry, many times we redeck a bridge that has solid piers, and I truly believe that that could be the case here, but I don't know, I don't get a straight answer anywhere. So I would just bring that to your discretion and see, do we pursue a bike path for a million dollars up here and shut down a bike path that already exists, that people use? Hunter lives there.
Down the road.
Runs up and down the road, before you change this into an interstate? I just think it's, brings good thought. I think you should consider, and I don't get a straight answer from anyone. So, before they, and I haven't signed off on this, they had, I recently bought that property down there, so.
I was going to say, where's yours? And then, so you got the property on where Chris is over with?
Chris owned across the road, and then there was four acres, and actually turns out to be five acres across the road that belonged to a howler, Linda Tomlin or howler. And I recently purchased, purchased this, and I don't want to pull the project up, I won't stop it, but I don't believe it's necessary. You can listen to the news, and they tell you we have to rebuild the interest, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. I'm 80 miles from airport, I can go any place in the world, I can drive to Indianapolis and not stop. So this is, in my opinion, all this infrastructure work, some of it is needed, but most of it is a WHPA project, it's just a works program. And I don't. and I don't believe we should throw our money away.
Well, there's probably places that need it more, Vern, I mean.
So, I, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And they've, like I said, I haven't signed off on, and I can't, you know, for specific people, it would be a benefit to a, a few. But do we spend that kind of money to help two people? It's just provocative thought. I don't think we should pursue it, and they're, they're not gonna start on till October anyway, so you have time to see if it's even funded, I'm not sure that it's funded, it might be.
And part of that is, like, we just talked about that, part of that this morning, Vern, in, in the regular road session, and part of, like, the million, and then how much does it actually cost us, or it will cost everybody every day, all the time.
That's exactly.
But how much does it actually cost the county, is it better for the whole benefit of the whole county, you know, like, you're like, this all conjecture.
But I wanted to bring that up, because I don't, I can't get those figures, if we can fix it ourselves for twenty thousand dollars, and we spend a million dollars and have to spend thirty thousand of our own money, you know, so use the balance and.
I think as far as redoing that bridge, I'm, I'm sure it's a width restriction thing on it, you can't, you can't, you can't fix that with the piers that's there, because I think you can't bear able to bridge that, that, that narrowly.
Well, you knock the blinders off in the cricket.
Well, that's what they've done down there. If you look at the abutments on them, but I, I'm sure, I feel sure that's why you can't.
They have silly rules, they can't spend money on a little water fort, they call it.
Right.
But, uh, is that our rule, or is that a state rule, does that affect our county money?
Federal money we found out, I think, come today, you can go back in it, give me, like, the old concrete.
Slabs.
It's all tax money, though, whether it's them serious.
Yeah, but when, when you said the day that the feds will not allow them, fund something and allow any money on the slab, what we call a concrete slab.
But they will replace in a bridge.
I've, I've put my faith in you to do the right thing, I just wanna bring it to your attention.
Well, I'm glad you brought up that issue, because I didn't know there was an issue, so you come in here and said something.
Uh, one of the men that owns some, some of the property there, that's not extremely valuable, that he lives right up the road, has lived there his entire life, doesn't want that turned into an interstate. I mean, you know, a ridiculous amount of money to spend on, down this, some of the stuff that they've done, it's just ridiculous money, I expect. For a road that's still rough when you get across the bridge. Yeah, so, use your good judgment, and, but, other gentleman said, I don't care if I live on a heavy road, hell, I don't particularly want to see the bridge closed,
Right.
but, I don't particularly want to see the million dollars spent on something that's not necessary. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I am in the phone booth.
You still got a landline?
Yes, I have a landline. My wife is in the beauty business, and them ladies call.
Is anybody, any of the other landowners in agreement or disagreement with that going on, or not, I'm just curious.
Some of them get a little money for it.
Okay.
And, of course, it actually would be to my benefit for it to go, because they offered me a figure that just a little bit more I would take, but then, it's
Yours is.
Wrong, it's wrong to do that.
Yours is that it's necessarily, you're against it, you just think it's money being spent that doesn't need to be spent.
Yeah, well, I, and I don't, I don't wanna see an interstate built down there for sixteen hundred feet, is the length of the project, sixteen hundred feet of interstate, and a Simms Township Road on this end, and a Simms Township Road on that end. And it's, it doesn't connect anything.
How does the Sims County, or Township Ford feel about it?
I talked to the road commissioner and his, I don't know if he's got a straight answer either. They don't want the road closed, and I think they've been told, I think they've been told, either take this or nothing, and I'm sure that there are more options. And if I can help, I haven't, like I said, I, my plate's full, and I pick things up all the time to try to make reason of things, and, uh, I've got Chapin Rose two or three numbers for him, and seldom get a return called, but unless the riches are left, but there's, there has to be other ways to fund this, and, you know, and I'm sure that maybe Adam and Chapin or Dale, or people know where there's other funds, so. And our new governor might change things, too, I, I'm like, say, I'm not sure funded, this thing might.
How much to fund it where, or who gets it, so.
Yeah. You guys have a good day, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vern.
Mr. Chairman, do we have any in business before this?
I can't think of any.
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion in second to adjourn this meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Motion carried.